Good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 5th, 2022. This is the first meeting and reorganizational meeting of the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting? Lori? Peter?
Uh huh.
Do I have a motion to open executive session? Lori? Peter? So we are going to move into executive session now. Once again, good evening. The trustees have re-entered from executive session and we will continue our reorganizational meeting. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
(inaudible)
So our first order of business tonight will be to address the leadership within the board. I ask for a board nominee for the position of president. Can you state who you're nominating, please?
I nominate Peter Casson to be our board president.
Okay. There are any other nominations?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought we were...
Are there any agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. I will call a motion to nominate Peter Casson as board president. Laura? Teraz? All in favor? The motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Casson.
Thank you.
At this point, based on your election, I will now swear you in, in order for you to take lead of the meeting.
All right.
Please repeat after me. I, Peter Casson...
I, Peter Casson.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution of the United States...
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of president...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of president.
...for the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District...
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester...
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester...
County of Westchester.
State of New York...
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I turn the meeting over to you.
All right. Great. Thank you very much, my fellow trustees, for trusting in me. Again, appreciate it. We need to now nominate a vice president, correct?
Actually, we're going to take the oath of office, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
We're going to give the oath of office to our new trustees.
Oh.
So that... And then, once they are sworn in...
Yep.
Then we can move ahead with the vice president nomination.
All right. So the oath of office for our newly-elected trustees. Laura, would it be you first?
Okay.
So you need to repeat after me. I, Laura Banky...
I, Laura Banky.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution of the United States...
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully... Faithfully discharge the duties of the Tuckahoe trustee for the Tuckahoe Board of Education, of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Okay. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the trustee for the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District...
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right. And Teraz.
I, Teraz Gardier...
I, Teraz Gardier.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution of the United States...
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of trustee for the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
The duties of trustee for the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. All right.
So next is nomination and election of the board vice president. Do I have a... Does anybody have a nomination? Lori?
I nominate Laura Banky for vice president.
All right. Do I have a motion for Laura Banky as vice president? Teraz, second. Lori? All in favor? All right. Congratulations, Laura.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have to appoint a district clerk. Oh, does that swear in? Yep. Okay. All right. Have to swear you in, Laura. Ready? Hi, Laura Banky.
Hi, Laura Banky.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution of the United States...
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president.
I will faithfully dis... What? Sorry.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president.
Discharge duties of vice president.
For the Board of Education...
Board of Education.
Of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have to appoint a district clerk. Resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Robin Dunn to the position of district clerk for the 2022-2023 school year and an annual rate of pay of $11,866.40. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Lori? Any discussion on that? All in favor?
All right. Great.
Okay. That's...
Do you have to swear, Teraz? Robin's got to swear.
Oh, Robin, I gotta swear you in, Robin. Okay. Jumping around here. Is the one in front? Yeah. Here we go. Okay. I, Robin Dunn...
I, Robin Dunn.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution of the United States...
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk...
For the Board of Education...
For the Board of Education.
Of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right. That gets us through. Make sure I didn't miss anything. Nope. I think we're good. Was that? Yeah. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything before, because I know we jumped through a little bit. All right. So that brings us to comments by the board. First off, I want to... Well, first of all, say thank you to my fellow trustees for electing me as president again, but I also wanted to apologize to all of you for how late we were. I know it was supposed to be a 7:30 public start. We had a very long executive session. We pride ourselves on being on time. I know you guys were waiting around for a half an hour, so I definitely apologize for that. We regret that, definitely. So I would propose that, based on that, unless anybody has anything pressing to say, we just skip over comments and move on. Everybody get with that?
Agreed.
Okay. So we'll do that. All right. Comments by the superintendent?
Okay. So I'm going to be very brief also, since you all were waiting for us, too. I just want to welcome everybody to the 2223 school year and thank the board, first of all, for your support. Last year, I thanked the community for all of your support, the parents and the students. We had a great year, and we're expecting another great year for this school year. We're busy with our capital project, I'm happy to say, and we are, you know, have teachers coming in for staff development. We have some new staff coming on. We'll have a vote pretty soon that we're excited about, so we would like to... I'd just like to welcome everybody. It's going to be a great year. Thank you.
Great. Awesome. Next is comments by our business manager.
Yes.
Sparks?
I'll be brief, too.
Sure.
I want to thank everyone for a wonderful year. I think that we had a great year, and I'm looking forward to next year. The field is moving along great. We anticipate the middle high school work to start very, very soon.
Looks like it here.
Yes. Hopefully, one day this week. So that's really, really exciting. And I want to thank the amazing staff in the business office that we have. This is our busy time, and, you know, we are very grateful for them and to our custodians for everything they're doing over the summer. It's really busy for us, so thank you to them.
Yeah. Great. Okay. I'm loving how the field progress looks. Every time I drive by, I see a little bit more done. Looks great.
Yeah.
All right. Great. So next, we have a first recognition of the audience for agenda items only. Does anybody have any comments regarding agenda items only? Nope? Okay. All right. So then, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Motion to approve a consent agenda items two through 47. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Teraz. Any comments or questions about any of these items? There's quite a bit. We all should have looked at them beforehand. Everybody good? All in favor?
All right. Great.
So that gets us to skip about 23 pages, which is nice. All right. Business of the board. Okay. Whereas the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes the award of a contract to Management Organization and Support Services LLC doing business as Cornerstone Children's Center with business offices at 90 Garth Road, Scarsdale, New York, 10583, to provide a full-day universal pre-kindergarten program pursuant to New York State Education Law 320... I'm sorry. 3602-E in Part 151 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education for up to 39 eligible children commencing in the 2022-2023 school year, with the option to renew the program for each of the four subsequent school years, and whereas all services during the 2021-2022 school year were provided satisfactorily and in accordance with the terms of the RFP and contract, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the board president to execute a renewal of said program with Cornerstone to provide such program for 2022-2023 school year, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools and business manager are authorized and empowered to take all necessary or appropriate actions in order to further the purpose of this resolution and comply with the awarded contract. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laura. All in favor? All right. Next, resolved, the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves an agreement dated June 1, 2022 between the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, the Management Organization Support Services LLC, and the Concordia Conservatory to provide music instruction to the district's universal pre-kindergarten program for the 2022-2023 school year, and directs the superintendent of schools to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, all in favor? Great. Next, accept donation. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the district from Judy G. Smith, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, is hereby resolved to accept a donation in the amount of $500 in honor of Dr. Amy Goodman, superintendent of schools to be appropriated at the district's discretion. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Lori, any comments? That was very nice, Ms. Smith, especially nice to honor you. That's pretty quiet. I haven't seen that before. Pretty neat. All right. All in favor? Great. Another donation. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the district from the PTA and anonymous donors, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, is hereby resolved to accept a donation of services of an artist in residence for the William E. Cottle Elementary School mural. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, any discussion on this?
I'm not sure I understand.
Yeah. So it's a donation to do...
Where we want a mural.
To create a mural.
So we... This mural that is... Has been created at William E. Cottle, which now that I could say we could put COVID, like, behind us in lots of ways, we really need to do a walkthrough of Cottle to see the new addition, thinking about when we put that on, and also to see this incredible, very inclusive mural. And I suggest that anybody who wants to see it can go on Facebook or our webpage... Our own district website. It does have a picture of the mural.
Yeah. It came out very nicely.
Yeah.
So what donation did we just... Were we accepting?
It's anonymous donors.
It's anonymous donors.
Oh, I suppose so.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Pretty cool.
I thought the kids did it.
No, but the PTA also... No, the PTA also was a very big part of that, too.
Okay.
Accepting that, too. Yes. And the kids did it. With an artist in residence, the kids did it.
Awesome. All in favor?
It's very awesome.
Great. Okay. Approve a side letter agreement. Resolved, the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the side letter agreement dated June 17, 2022, by and between the district and the CSEA, as attached to the official minutes of this meeting, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, all in favor? Okay. Approve an MOA. Resolved, the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a memorandum of agreement dated June 21, 2022, by and between the district and the Tuckahoe Administrators Association, as attached to the official minutes of this meeting, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laura, any discussion on this? This is... Okay. All in favor? Great. Okay. Resolve, the Board of Education, approve photographer. Resolved, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves an agreement by and between the district and REAS, photography services for the 2021-2022 middle school graduation ceremony at a cost not to exceed $250. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, all in favor? All right. Approve an intermunicipal agreement. Resolved, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute the 2022 intermunicipal agreement for street resurfacing and repairs of asphalt concrete. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Lori, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Approve a purchase agreement. Resolve the... To approve a purchase services agreement with education data services in the amount of $3,070 for the 2022-2023 school year. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Teraz, all in favor? All right. Approve a capital project accounting agreement. Resolve, the Board of... I'm sorry. Resolve to approve an agreement with fiscal advisors and marketing incorporated for capital project accounting and state aid services for the period of July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023, at a rate of $215 an hour. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laura, all in favor? All right. Approve a contract extension. Resolve to... Resolve to the... To extend the contracts from the following lowest responsible bidders for the 2022-2023 school year at the same rates as 2021-2022. Plumbing bid, Joseph Lombardo Plumbing Heating Incorporated, which is $66,458.4. Facilities management services, A&amp;A maintenance, which is $98,106.51. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Teraz, all in favor? All right. Award a bid. Resolve, the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District accepts the lowest responsible bid for the following contractors for the 2022-2023 school year. Electrical bid, Scotty Electrical Corp., for $51,102.40. Air conditioning and refrigeration services, Atlantic Westchester Incorporated, which is new for 2022-2023. Maintenance and repair of boilers, burners, and related equipment. Oilco Heating Corp. for $56,069.19. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Teraz, all in favor? All right. Approve a purchasing agreement. Resolve to approve a purchasing services agreement with Ed Data Services in the amount of $2,000 for the period of April 1, 2022, through March 31, 2023. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laura, all in favor?
Wait. Do you have a question?
Yeah. I just had a question.
Yep.
Can you just... What do... What does Ed Data Services do? Again, just to refresh my memory.
Sure. So they do cooperative bidding, where they do bidding for a number of school districts throughout the state, and then we can use their lowest bid.
Got it. Got it. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. We already voted on that, right? Robert?
Right.
Okay. Approved disposal of public property. Resolve, the Board of Education, in accordance with Policy 6900, disposal of public property declares the following equipment to be obsolete. See attached list. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes disposal of the above by offering for sale to local municipalities or local nonprofit organizations, or sell at public auction or sale. Otherwise, they will be recycled in the most environmentally appropriate manner. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laura, all in favor? All right. Extend a contract. Resolve to approve the one-year extension of the food services contract with Aramark Educational Services LLC through the 2022-2023 school year at a 6.3% CPI. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Laura. We're moving through this fast, aren't we? Come on, aren't we?
We didn't have an option with that one.
I know. No. We've discussed this many times before. All in favor? Okay. Extend a contract. Resolve to approve an extension of the summer transportation contract with Royal Coach Lines for the period of July 1, 2022, through August 30, 2022, at a total anticipated cost of $70,069.90. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laura, any discussion? I know there was some back-and-forth negotiation on this, right? This was the best we can do.
This is different. This is for summer.
Oh, this is for summer, now for next year. Okay. But it's the same increase, though, right?
Sorry, Peter.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Like, what do we use the summer busing for?
For our ESY students that are in a full-day program, that they either... We run a program here, but we also have some students that attend out-of-district programs.
So either come here or out of...
Yes.
So it's only for the full-day kids?
Yes.
Ooh. That's expensive.
It is expensive.
It's expensive. Bussing's expensive.
Bussing is expensive. It is.
And I'm sure the price of fuel is driving this up quite a bit, right? Which is obviously a big thing. Yeah.
All in favor? Okay. All right. Approve a donation. Another donation, which is great. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the district from the PTA Cultural Arts Committee, and whereas the district would like to accept such a donation, it is hereby resolved to accept a donation in the amount of $2,000 for the purchase of instruments for the use by the Tuckahoe Middle School and Tuckahoe High School Strings Program. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laura, any discussion? This is...
That's great.
We appreciate all the donations. This is actually a really good one. It's great. Strings program is amazing, so it's nice to see that being supported externally as well.
Yeah. Thank you to the PTA.
Yeah. Thank you to the PTA, for sure. All in favor? Okay. Point a board attorney. Resolve to appoint Irvin and Flazo, PC, as board attorneys for the 2022-2023 school year for an annual retainer fee of $82,875 for up to 425 hours of work for all legal services which may be required by the district, excluding litigation and/or hearing matters. Services in excess of 425 hours will be billed at $185 per hour, and services for litigation and/or hearing matters will be billed at $215 per hour. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Lori, all in favor? All right. Appoint an auditor. Resolve, the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District appoints Benadie... Benadio, right? Benadio? Yeah. And Company LP as the external auditors for the school year commencing July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2023. ending June 30, 2023. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laurie, all in favor? All right, resolution authorizing piggybacking. This one's a little long. I spoiled. There was a lot of short ones in there. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District pursuant to the authority granted in the General Municipal Law Article 5A, Section 103 desires, desires to participate in omnia partners, whereas Section 103 of the General Municipal Law permits Tuckahoe Union Free School District to make purchases of apparatus, materials, equipment, or supplies, or to contract for services related to the installation, maintenance, or repair of apparatus, materials, equipment, and supplies. May make such purchases or may contract for such services related to the installation, maintenance, or repair apparatuses, materials, equipment, and supplies as may be required by the Tuckahoe Union Free School District therein through the use of a contract let by the United States of America or any agency thereof, any state or any other county or political subdivision or district therein, if such contract was let to the lowest responsible bidder or on the basis of best value in a manner consistent with this section and made available for use by other government entities, whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District desires to participate for the purposes of fulfilling and executing its respective public government, governmental purposes, goals, objectives, programs, and functions. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has reviewed the benefits of participating in this program based on this review, has conducted the program, I'm sorry, has concluded the program will provide the best value to taxpayers of this Tuckahoe Union Free School District through anticipated savings to be realized. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District is authorized to participate in purchasing from omnia partners for the period through June 30, 2023, and that the Superintendent designated is authorized to register for and effectuate purchases from omnia partners program on behalf of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Teraz, all in favor? Pro proposal. Whereas the schools district architect received a proposal from Tailored Environmental Incorporated to provide testing services for a layer of soil materials that were discovered at the field at William E. Cottle in the course of the schools district capital project, whereas it is necessary to have these materials tested by a qualified testing service such as Tailored Environmental Incorporated, and whereas the school district's architect recommends the school district retention of Tailored Environmental Incorporated to perform these testing services. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education approves the retention of Tailored Environmental Incorporated to perform the testing of the layer of soil materials that were discovered at the field at William E. Cottle, and the expenditure of the school district funds for these services in an amount not to exceed $5,000. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President and/or Superintendent of Schools to execute such document, documents, and to take such other actions as are necessary to effectuate this resolution. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laurie, any discussion on that? All in favor? All right, approve a contract. Be resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the contract dated June 23, 2022 between the district and Bubble Mania, Cassie Carley, owner for summer programming for elementary students. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Second?
Oh, sorry.
Laura, all in favor? All right. Approve a scoring service. Resolve that the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the following individuals as independent contractors for the purpose of scoring Regents' examinations for the, for the district in the 2021-2022 school year. Eric Furman, John Costa, Alexandra Blashenko, Alex Fletcher, Stacy Fisherman-Golring, Nora Deneen, Douglas Weissman, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a rate of $100 per hour for the Regents' examination scoring services provided by the above individuals during the 2021-2022 school year. Do I have a motion? Laurie, second. Teraz, all in favor? All right, appoint a school physician. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District sought proposals for school physician services for the 2022-2023 fiscal year with the, with the option to extend for five one-year periods thereafter, and whereas the proposals received were opened on June 16, 2022, and now therefore be resolved based upon a review of the proposals received, the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Dr. Rosemary Calgares as school district physician for the period of Ju, of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, for an annual fee of $25,000. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President to execute a contract with Dr. Rosemary Calgares to serve as the school district physician as above described, and be it further resolved, the Board of Education, I'm sorry, the Superintendent of Schools and Business Manager are authorized and empowered to take all necessary or appropriate actions in order to further the purpose of this resolution and comply with the awarded contract. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Second. Laura, okay. All in favor? All right, great. That brings us to personnel recommendations, which we are going to do in a bundle. Do we want to acknowledge? Yeah, absolutely. So why don't we just go ahead and vote on it first, right? Okay, so resolve that the Board of Education approves personnel action items A through Q as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Yep?
Discussion.
What's, can we motion, first motion first?
Okay.
Motion?
Yep.
Laura, second. Teraz, discussion. What do you got, Laurie?
This is for, this is for the new appointment for A?
Yes.
Okay. I am going to abstain from voting today only because I was not present. I was away, so I was not able to participate in the interview process that the Board had. So I'm going to abstain today for that. I hope that that was appropriate for me to say.
I think that's okay, right? She doesn't need to do anything, right? She just won't vote, okay.
And I'm hoping that as we move forward with other positions of administration that we do a better job of being intentional about diversifying our administrative staff that is better reflective of our student body, and that is hiring someone of color. We need to be more intentional about that as part of our strategic planning and all of that, making sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students accordingly. Not that the people in them are not doing that. I'm just saying that we need to be more intentional about diversifying staff, administrative staff. I haven't seen that since I've been here, and I've been here for 10 years now, so.
Okay. Laurie, any other comments? Okay, all in favor? So that's for everything in the items, including A, so, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, did you, do we want to acknowledge?
Yes, I want to congratulate Mr. Andrew Colaschano for rising to the top of our interview process. As people know, he, Andrew was a teacher here. Now he's not anymore. Health teacher, very well-regarded coach. He, we believe that he will do a great job in this position. He interned under a interim, and we have the best of faith, and we believe we made a good decision with Andrew, so we're excited to be working with you.
Yeah, congratulations, Andrew.
Congratulations.
I think it's, yeah. We're very happy to have some, you know, some stability now in this position, and it's been an interim for a couple of years. Sure, absolutely, and, and, you know.
We also like when we can get a teacher who is also a community resident to rise up to this, this level, so it's very special for us.
So, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Goodman and the Board of Education for putting your faith in me and providing me this opportunity. I'm extremely grateful and excited to be able to continue to work in partnership with the administrative team, with the teachers, with the staff, with our coaches, but most importantly, our students and our families here in the district. I'm really a firm believer, and I've heard a lot of you say that it really takes a village to raise a child, and I believe that wholeheartedly, and I could not be happier to be part of this village and this community, whether it be school or the town or the village itself. I'm committed to providing leadership and maintaining collaborative relationships with all students and all families within our district, ensuring that all students receive the opportunities they are so deserving of. I look forward to the upcoming school year. I hope everyone enjoys the rest of their summer, and go Tigers.
All right, great. All right, so I think I deserve a round of applause for getting through this thing in a half an hour. Right? Oh, that was pretty good, wasn't it?
You never ask your own applause.
I should, I should, I should get into auctioneering, I think, you know, maybe.
And he did it without water.
Yeah, I know. So we do, we do have one more item, obviously, and that is the second recognition of the audience for any items at all, if anybody wants to speak about, to the Board about anything at all. Anybody? No? Okay, all right. So that brings us to the end of our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Laurie, second. Teraz, all in favor? All right, we're looking forward to another great year.
Yay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have some things to sign, right, Robin?
Yes.